Good evening. I'm Dennis Schor, I'm the acting chairman for tonight. So we'll begin this meeting of the Morton County Plan and Zoning, March 26, '25. And we'll have a call to order, and we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next will be the roll call. Eli L., rather. Buckley?
Here.
Zach Meyer?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Berger?
I'm here.
Tomac?
Here.
Wald?
Here.
Kissed? Okay, we do have a quorum, so we can continue on with our meeting. And first thing, we have two items on the agenda tonight, so I'll ask for approval of the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Then we have the approval of minutes from February 26th of '25 meeting. Do you need to look at that for a couple of minutes to check it out? So when you think we're properly informed, we can have a motion on that.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Here we have a motion by Jackie to the minutes from the February 26th meeting.
All second.
Okay. And we have a second by Marie. Any comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. As I previously mentioned, we have two items on the agenda tonight. And the first will be a public hearing regarding a request from Maverick Properties, Jib Carlson, for the final plat of a short form subdivision known as Rosemary, third subdivision on approximately 7.22 acres at the northeast one quarter of Section 8 Township, 139 North, Range 82 West, Morton County. Natalie, you want to carry from there?
Sure, thank you. This is located north of Monty's Rancheros subdivision. This is on 139A, so the property is over here. It's currently zoned residential, lots of residential around it. So our future land use priority for the area, all the gray is existing development. The yellow is prioritized for one and a half acre to five acre residential. The applicant would like to split two lots, so the property is 7.22 acres, split it into So there's an existing approach off of 139A that's been used for quite some time for the existing home. This had been divided off that lot. It had been larger, and then the lot north had gotten divided, and a right-of-way had been established here in the process of dividing that last subdivision. So this is a public right-of-way to get in that approach. And then this new lot that's being proposed to break off would have, the actual lot would come over here to the approach so that they just have access on their own property to get over to the main part of Lot 2. They don't need a rezoning because it's already zoned residential. Staff is recommending approval, and I can take any questions.
Natalie, this is out north of that proposed development where the city's looking at developers going in and putting lots in and stuff? Isn't that correct?
This is out west, kind of by Crombute Lake.
Oh, so more further west?
Well, the lake is further west than this, but it's kind of out that direction on 139E.
Oh, I was confusing Rough Riders with Crombute.
That is out west when you're thinking in city terms.
Right.
This is quite a bit further west.
So Natalie, I just have a quick question. So there's a 40-foot easement for utilities, and is that where the road's going?
So this lot, it's not a right-of-way. That sort of long strip wouldn't be a right-of-way. This would be an actual part of the lot.
Okay.
So it's like a flag-shaped lot.
Right. So that's where they're building a road, right?
Nope. This isn't a road at all.
So, okay, Becky asked the same question, is where is there access to get into that lot?
Yep, so it'd be right here. And they're going to drive, like, they're going to drive on their property and get over there.
They'd build a driveway.
Yeah, they'd have a driveway, but it won't be a, it's not a public right-of-way road.
Right, right. That's where they're, okay, so they can't go to the east there, there's just a small, right there?
Yeah.
That approach, they can't?
We don't, we don't want to make more approaches off of here.
I mean, you can't just add to that?
We'd rather minimize our approaches.
She said there's an existing approach there.
Yeah. Is that permitted?
Yes, it is. It's an existing approach.
The only thing is it's not on their property.
I know, but if you, if you just widen it?
You'd have to negotiate with the neighboring landowner.
Okay.
I mean, from a functional standpoint, if they talk to their neighbor and their neighbor says, sure, use my approach, or they come up with some sort of private access easement type of thing, if that is a permitted approach, then yeah, they could use that. But it's just, it's not their property, so it's not included in the plat.
But the approach is public, though, isn't it? Because it's on, it's, our approach is considered your property, or, I mean, it's on the road right-of-way.
So once you get off the right-of-way, then it's not public. And I actually, I know that we have right-of-way up to this line. I don't know about that little bit. I don't know that that is, I don't know if it is or not, public.
Okay. Just curious.
And I think, is there a fence? There's, no?
There's no fence.
That's something they could look at.
That's owned by the ex-mayor, right?
Mm-hmm. It was the last time I checked.
Owned by who?
Arlen Van Beek.
Arlen Van Beek, yep.
Are there other questions from the board here to Natalie? Any other questions? Then I'll open the public hearing. It's time I declare a public hearing, and is somebody here to represent this particular request? Jib Carlson, is he here? Is anybody here to represent the request?
I suppose Mark is.
Mark, do you have any comments? Anybody have any comments? Again, this is a call for a public hearing. Second call.
So, Mark, they're, they're going to put a road then in that long skinny piece then?
Yes, just for the record, Mark Isaacs with Independent Land Surveying Engineering. Yes, the plan is to put a driveway, actually, I think he said he was going to put the driveway south of those little tree row there, closer to the road. See the little trees there? Right in the middle of the strip?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, boy, that's hard to set.
So he planned on putting a driveway in on the south side of those that would service the house.
So the road, the road that's going up to that other property, then, he will use that to get to that, then?
Yes.
Does he have to do another approach there? Is there a ditch there?
No, that's, that's actually public right-of-way.
Oh, okay.
That goes north.
Okay.
Yep, that's public right-of-way that the driveway sits in, so he would be able to use that and then come off of that driveway to put his own driveway in.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay. Is that clarified? Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Okay, we had our second call. Now, is there any else that would care to comment? Third call for comments. No further comments, and I'll close this public hearing and turn it over to the board here to decide what to do with this.
Are you ready for motion, Mr. Chairman?
I'm ready for motion.
I move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short form subdivision known as Rosemary, third subdivision, as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Jackie.
Becky.
Made that a second, so we have a motion, a second. I'll call the roll. Jackie?
Yes.
Zach Meyer?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Tomac?
Yes.
Wald?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so the motion is carried. Which takes us to our second public hearing, which is to be the Harmon Lake Dam Breach Inundation Overlay District Moratorium Renewal for another action in Section 7, 8, 16, 17, 18, 20, 21, 28, 29, and 33 Township, 140 North Range, 81 West, in Morton County. So we turn it over to you, Natalie, to update and go over there.
Okay, so the county established the Harmon Lake Dam Breach Inundation Overlay District back in 2021. And when we established this district, so the orange line on the outside is the extent of the whole district, we separated it into three zones. So there's Zone 2, which is in the orange, Zone 3, which is purple down there, and then Zone 1, which makes up the majority of the overlay district. And we set standards for Zone 2 and 3, and those standards include a certain elevation for homes or anything with living quarters in it, and no basements. Some of those areas overlap with the special flood hazard area, but there's also this overlay district standard that applies to those areas as well. And at that time, we adopted a moratorium on Zone 1 because there are impositions that the state put on lands downstream of the dam when it was constructed, and we were waiting on the state to provide some direction about what our assumptions should be about risk in that Zone 1. So we imposed the moratorium right-of-way. The state still had not provided direction that we were looking for by 2023, so we renewed that moratorium. The expiration of that renewal is the end of April, and so this is coming back for the county to review and decide if we want to renew the moratorium again or take some other kind of action. So in that time, the state did, the water, or Department of Water Resources, they developed and published a revised dam safety hazard policy document. I left a couple excerpts up with a few of you up there. So they provided that guidance, and then they provided a legacy dam policy also adopted in 2024. So that legacy policy basically says, if you have an existing dam, which Harmon Dam is, it won't be required to follow the new standards unless you have a permissible action, which would be not just regular maintenance, but some major upgrade, things of that nature, then you would have to upgrade it to the standards that apply today. And then in the revised handbook, they did provide some direction on assumptions for downstream dam modeling, which are helpful. They don't exactly tell us what to do about this situation, but do provide some assumptions for modeling, which was more than we had before. So we, I don't think we're going to get anything further from the state in terms of direction on how to address the assessment of risk in this area. So now it's up to the county to decide what we want to do from a policy standpoint. And I think most of you are here for the renewal. Many of you are here, I think, for the original overlay district. So I'm not going to go into a ton of detail, but definitely I can provide whatever info you may need to help ground you in what's going on. So this is the same thing, it's a little busy. This is the zoning map. You have this in your packet, but essentially, just showing you the yellow outline that goes around here. That was the outline that was attached to the dam permit issued by the State Engineer, Office of the State Engineer. And that is the outline where they said the county should not allow any development in that area, otherwise the state would not cost share for any kind of upgrades that might be necessary for the dam. At the time that the dam was constructed, there were residences downstream or in the dam inundation area, but they said just you can't allow anymore. So since that time, the Water Resource District has been trying to strategize about how to go about enacting that sort of limitation on development. So that is the outline that was in the permit condition. That was back in 2004. Since then, techniques certainly for modeling have gotten better and more nuanced, and our computing power is better. The red outline that you see is what was on the last map, and that was developed by Houston Engineering, and that is the, what we regulate to for our overlay district. So those are obviously a little bit different from one another. So there's kind of a question of, you know, are we fulfilling our permit condition? You know, we have a little bit that's outside, but we kind of went through that at the, when we established the overlay district, that we felt like that was splitting hairs on those finer points is, I think we had a comfort level that that was okay. So for Zone 1. Again, that one, so that large area that's kind of bluish, that is what we have to decide what to do with. So knowing that the state has provided what they're going to provide, we probably need to take some time to develop an approach to what we're going to do policy-wise in that area, cooperating with, you know, the county and the Water Resource District in collaborating on an approach. So the Water Resource District, they did have their board meeting today, and just by consensus of the board, they suggested, and staff concurs, maybe extend the moratorium once again for a two-year period. And I think that we can come up with a policy approach in that time so that we don't have to extend it again, and for that to be the goal. So that would be the recommendation from staff and the water board. And I can take any questions that you have.
Natalie, how many moratoriums have we had on this so far?
So there's one moratorium initially of two years and an extension of two years. So this would be the second extension for a total of six, like, if we renewed it again, by the end of it, it would be a total of six years. And for those first four, we were waiting on the state, and they just came out with their guidance last year, so that at least is progress.
Natalie, is there any length of time to where it comes to a dead end, where you can't extend a moratorium any time?
So if we look at our Fort Lincoln Viewshed Moratorium, that was in place for decades. I mean, I guess we don't have an answer to that question.
No.
We got rid of it last year or the year before, I can't remember when. We finally did remove that moratorium on development around Fort Abraham Lincoln State Park. So it did have an end, but it had gone on for decades, plural.
Further questions from the board? Any further questions? This is also open to a public hearing, so at this time, if there's people here in the audience that like to speak to this matter, please come forward. State your name and your concerns, input.
Dan Price, landowner of all the, in the blue, so it's just up to water board and someone else to decide what they're going to do with my property?
So maybe Natalie can speak to legality of that.
Yeah, sorry, I shouldn't have just said them. I mean, it would have to be a public process, and it would be public hearings, kind of like these have been, and send letters to landowners who have property in that area so that they can participate in what that outcome or that policy decision would look like.
So if it, you decide that we can't build or develop it, do I get bought out my property rights?
I'm not sure how legitimate a process is to where the government buys out property by for different purposes or not, whether it has to go through a lawsuit type of approach, I don't know. Unless Natalie asks me input on that?
So there's a lot of different ways that the county and the water board could go about it, and so there'll have to be discussions about what that would look like. It could be a development limitation, I mean, can't be a limit on all development, for sure. It could be limits on types of development, or it could be purchase of development rights and how that gets paid for, maybe that's a special assessment. It'd be a really involved discussion. So I guess I don't want to say which approach the county and the water board would take because there's a lot of different ways to approach it, and definitely will involve the landowners in that discussion.
So basically, what Natalie's saying, there wouldn't be any action taken without thorough input from the property owners?
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this particular matter? Okay. Second call for public hearing. Third call for input, public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, would Wade want to address us? Do you have anything, does the water board, have you, can you address us what the water board for sure has kind of decided, Wade?
For the record, Wade Bachmeier, Chairman of Morton County Water Resource District, Chairman Rohr, Commissioner Buckley, Natalie summed it up pretty well. It's, the guidance from the State Water Commission, or what's called the Department of Water Resources now, was, in my opinion, lackluster at best. They definitely did not clear this issue up in terms of the dam breach inundation zone. The dam breach inundation zone is not something that Morton County Water Resource District created. That was created as a result of federal and state funds when the dam was permitted and Prior to the building of the dam, when Otter Creek was not contained in any way, large rainfall or snow melt or flash flood or anything flooded the vast majority of those bottoms. And that was the intent of the dam originally, was to protect agricultural land downstream for the, at that time, current landowners.
Wade, why is there reluctance on part of the state to, to come up with a recommendation or something to reconcile this?
Sir, I wish I could answer that question.
Is it highly complicated or just political, or?
I believe it would be more political than anything. See, there's dam hazard classifications on the federal government side, there's state government, and I think the State Department of Water Resources at this time around tried to model as closely as they could the federal regulations, but I have not studied it in depth.
Okay.
But traditionally, there's been three classifications of dams, low hazard, medium hazard, and high hazard. Garrison Dam, for instance, is built to a high hazard classification, and part of that has to do with the volume of water or the amount of drainage area for the basin.
Any other questions for Wade on the board?
Because from what I've read is that if we allow buildings there, that it would have to be probably upgraded to a high hazard dam, and who's going to pay for upgrading that dam to a high hazard dam?
I have no clue.
Twenty-five million dollar question.
Yeah, yeah, twenty-five million, yeah, I know that.
At that point, we know for certain that the state would not put any funds in.
To put, to make it a high hazard?
Correct, correct. Which means dismantling it, which would be an enormous cost also, but dismantling it then puts all of those potential homes that the county allows, puts them in jeopardy because of no flood protection.
What was in the dam made for flood control?
The dam was originally built to control, to impound water and, and to stop the flooding of the bottom lands.
To control flood?
For agriculture, yes.
But the dam is recreational.
Right.
So why did it get put recreational? Who gave that okay, put it in recreational, which now made it a?
The recreation is not part of the, the classification?
But that's what you're trying to hold more water back, if it can be drained in the, in the fall, basically, so you can't bring it up.
So the, just to clarify those questions, so the recreation component that, you know, a lot of people use Harmon Lake for recreation, that use has nothing to do with how that dam gets classified. So the high, medium, low hazard classification, there's a federal classification, you know, high, medium, low, each state can do their own thing about how they define that, but North Dakota, I think, has fallen in line with what the federal definitions are, and those definitions are based on impacts, I don't want to say destruction, that's a strong word, but impacts downstream if the flood, or if the dam were to breach. So it doesn't have to do with recreation above, it has to do with negative impacts below the dam. That's how the classifications are defined. That's how the classifications are defined.
If the dam was drained, correct? If the dam was?
If it were full, if it's a stand, if it's a normal standing pool, yes, yes. But the one really important point that was not, I think, part of the initial discussion in years past was the understanding that, okay, so let's say we were to remove the dam, we would owe the federal government something like twenty million dollars for their lost investment. So, it, you know, it's like upgrade it or take it down. It's like a massive cost either way.
Correct, I think with Dan, nobody, I don't think he said he wanted to take it down. You could probably have nine or 10 months, eight or 10 months out of the year.
When it would be dry.
Well, it wouldn't be dry, but it would be cold. So, why can't you use like Dan said and start releasing that water and pay your children to buy it?
Yeah, yeah. And that.
And let it do what it was designed to do.
Sure.
Just want prevention.
Yep. And unfortunately, the class of the dam doesn't have to do with how much water is actually in it on any given day. It has to do with the space, the potential for what it can hold. So, let's say we had massive drought and it's.
It was just dangerous at the whole.
According to how it gets classified, yes, by the state and the feds, that's, that wasn't our idea. That's just how they classify it. So, yes, to that point, you know, let's say, let's say it just got released kind of at all times and it doesn't have much standing water, it still gets classified based on how much water it could hold, you know, at the full standing pool, even if it's.
I believe last fall, you had a canyon drain and five would come by.
It was, yeah, there was a, there was a day.
There was a canyon drain.
Yep.
Did the dam even get closed or?
Right, right. And, you know, again, it's, it's not about what we observe, it's just about, you know, what the ramifications are in terms of development you allow based on purely how the dam gets classified by the state.
So, it'd be easier to change how they classify it, say whether it's full, nearly full, as opposed to doing this?
So, they can't, they have their definitions, and the new definition say if there's potential for loss of any life downstream, so it's even more stringent than it used to be, medium hazard used to mean potential for loss of a few lives, and now the definition is loss of any lives whatsoever, potential for loss of life whatsoever makes it a high hazard. So, right now, it is a high hazard dam.
So, you just follow the creek before the dam built and now it'd be a loss of like a few for the dam to be bad?
Sure. But there wasn't an embankment, you know, that holds back, that has a potential to hold back water, so they don't, they're not classifying creeks, they're just classifying dams.
So, how can you justify houses way downstream with mountains? And let them, people have houses, they should be cleared out? Because you're going to take those lives. That's where the majority of water's going to go.
Right. And because they were there already?
But that's what, that's my point.
Right.
It's okay if they're there, but you can't do it now.
Right. And I mean, again, we didn't invent this. This is, we're, we're doing our best to accommodate what the state has required in terms of the permit, the dam permit.
Their life is more dangerous than ours.
Which is probably true.
You're going to get put away.
Yep. That is probably true.
Well, in government, practical reasoning, in a practical sense, is not often a component of how things are done. I've been around government for a long time, so, and then, then we're bound by, by, there were certain restrictions or whatever. We, we understand, you know, the practical view and things, but it doesn't necessarily mean that because we understand that we're necessarily in a position to make some of these changes.
Right. Yeah, our hands are pretty tied in this situation. And they were tied from the very beginning.
Right.
So, I mean, with this dam went in, it should have been right away, it could be a high hazard dam.
That would have been a good idea.
So, whose fault is that?
There were a lot of parties involved.
But I mean, who's, who really took the responsibility to say, let's put a dam in, it's going to be high, high risk for any development?
I don't think any, yeah.
So, the dam wasn't funded for a high, high risk dam?
That's a good question.
Why doesn't the dam just get put in as right now is high risk, we take care of this problem?
Right. And I mean, that could happen and then just assess it back on all, you know, countywide, that, that could happen. That could be, I mean, there's all kinds of options. That's why we have to have a public process and have a discussion.
I was going to say, you're going to have to follow the processes and the, the extra efforts involved in dealing with those kind of bureaucratic matters.
The clarification that Natalie said, said that it's going to be a process of two years, who, who's going to be going determining the rules or what, how is that going to be, is your, your view or your office?
So, we, because it affects zone one, you know, which is a finite number of landowners, you know, obviously, we're going to send notices to them. If during that process, it looks like it might turn into something where there's going to be a wider impact, you know, in terms of special assessments or whatnot, I think we would try to send out notices or do more.
I think it'd be like dam being involved with the policies you're creating the next two years.
Right. And, and I, I should say, you know, it's not necessarily we're starting tomorrow and we're going to be done in two years. We are, we're working on many code updates, so it'll, it'll have to happen.
I guess one of those processes that you, you know, that you see is coming.
Yes, yes, yep. And I think it's going to be a lot of, a lot of discussions.
Okay. Any further comments? Because we're on the, getting toward the last call. Any further discussion? Okay, we have the third and final call for public hearing discussion on this Harmon Lake inundation overlay thing. So, leave it up to, do we, we just, is a motion to be made here to refer this then to the county as you have presented?
So, Chairman Rohr, if we're going to meet our timeline, we do have enough time and the number of hearings and advertisements, I've pre-advertized it in anticipation that this would probably go towards another extension. So, it has been advertised at the next county commission for the 10th and the 22nd. So, in order to meet the deadline where we're not lapsing in April, this would need to get referred to county commission today.
So, so the motion tonight, Natalie, would be to extend the moratorium for another two years.
Right.
At this point in time?
Yes, yep.
To move it forward?
So that we can do the, have time to do the work to do it right.
Okay, so.
And I, I'm just suggesting two years, that could be any period of time. I would suggest not less than two, two years.
Okay, up to two years.
Or, or not, not less than.
Right, yeah. Up to. Okay, does the board have any question about that?
I do have one, Mr. Chairman. So, Natalie, just to clarify, within the next two years, we would be coming up with some kind of rules or regulations to put in this area?
Yes.
So, that would be the end goal?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, yeah, we've got solar, we've got direct air capture, we've got data centers that are all in the pipeline, are loaded in front, so, you know.
That's exactly what I was.
Yeah, so I was like, I, I don't want to be, I don't want to extend it forever because truly this did kind of come first and it's been on a moratorium, but we've got a lot of things we need to work on, and two years will be tight, I think.
Okay. Does everybody understand what we need for motion and to make the motion?
We have to close the public hearing. I thought I closed it. You called, you called by only.
Oh, okay, then I will close the public hearing then at this time, and then go to the action of the board.
So, do you think we would be including like the Soil Conservation District in that discussion as well because they were involved majorly?
Mm-hmm. That's a good idea.
In the process of building the dam?
Mm-hmm.
And the water board?
Mm-hmm.
And the landowners?
Yes.
That are involved in that zone?
And, yeah, and the Department of Water Resources to the extent that they wish to be involved.
And I don't know if they're going to give us any really, I want to call it help or?
Right. We can still invite them.
Yes.
Just, I just had the funny thought, we could send everybody to the dam safety school. I've been to it, it's, it's actually pretty good.
Okay, we're looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment, it's not a, this moratorium has expiration date on it. So did the other ones previous. Previous county commissions and commissioners don't want anything more than two years on this because there could be guidance coming from state water board, some type of regulation might change, might be some guidance even Corps of Engineers, you don't know where the guidance or the new rules can come from. So, the expiration date, this isn't like the previous moratorium around Fort Lincoln State Park that went on forever because no moratorium should go on forever. This one goes on for two years and then hopefully with the two years, things can change and different rules can put in, and then hopefully better things can come out of it. But if they don't, the county would be in no position to afford operating that dam as nothing more than a storage, a storm storage drain or system. County couldn't afford to bring down the dam. Because as soon as they bring down the dam, well, now there's no dam, we're going to let a bunch of houses in, and you do get that 10-inch rain, and you do get a heavy runoff. That whole area down there will be underwater. Plus, it's an area that's not just Harmon Lake, it's also Garrison Dam, and nobody seems to always remember that that area was underwater in 2011. And that wasn't from Harmon Lake, that was from Garrison, which is a high hazard dam. You know, these are the rules set by federal government and the state, and the county has got to do what is best to fulfill them, or the county is going to be open to huge liability that could bankrupt it. There's no easy answers to any of this, except that you got to do what is best to keep the county from being bankrupt due to a problem that is really nobody's fault. One quick question for Natalie, there is nothing in this moratorium that stops that land from being farmed?
No.
There's nothing in this moratorium that would stop a building being put up for the advancement of agriculture?
Correct.
A barn, an equipment shed?
As long.
Anything like that?
As long as it doesn't have living quarters in it.
Correct.
So, even if you wanted to put up something for feedlot type thing, I mean, if it was the right size, that doesn't need a different permit. You know, you can, you could do, yes, farm ranch related buildings, you could even put up something ag, industrial ag commercial, as long as nobody's living in it and you don't have huge concentrations of people in it.
Because I do understand, there's a lot of farmers down in that area, and some of them are my lifelong family friends. And I wouldn't want to take away their livelihood. And as long as they're able to farm on some pretty fertile ground that has center pivot irrigation, there's still value in that farming. So, those are, would be my main concerns, and I would have a motion if you are ready, Mr. Chairman.
I'm ready.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend to the Morton County Commission to approve Resolution Number PZ 25-04 to continue the moratorium on the construction of all inhabitable structures and structures with living quarters within zone one of the Harmon Lake Dam Breach Zone Overlay District for an additional period of two years ending April 30th, 2027, as the moratorium complies with North Dakota Century Code 11-33-03 in that the moratorium protects and guides the development of non-urban areas, provides for emergency management, lessens government expenditures, conserves and develops natural resources, and provides for the North Dakota Department of Water Resources to establish future updated dam hazard classifications. The moratorium also complies with the North Dakota State Engineer Construction Permit Number 1092. The moratorium does not prohibit or prevent the use of land or buildings for farming or any of the normal incidents of farming as required by North Dakota Century Code 11-33.2-03.
Okay. That is the motion.
Yes.
Do we have a second? And a second, we'll have to repeat the motion also.
[laughing].
Do we have a second for that motion?
All second.
Okay, we have a second. There's any questions or comments regarding Andy's motion, just in case some things have to be clarified? If not, then I'll.
Jesse and Dwayne are online, so you'll have to call them, unless they have anything to say.
Okay.
They'd have to unmute themselves.
Yep. Are they unmuted?
No, they're, they're on mute. And Jesse said, oh, there, Dwayne.
Yeah, I was going to say, I have no comments or agree with what Andy presented for a motion.
Okay. Okay, we, so we have no other comments or questions of this motion? Then I'll call for the vote. Dwayne?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Jessie?
He might have to be.
And I go, yes, so that, and I'm going to vote for that. Is there anything else to come before the order of the board tonight?
I have a question. Was, was Dwayne on when we went through the first one? Because I don't recall him being part of the vote.
That's a good question. He appeared on there, but I didn't have it switched over. So, I mean, we do have a.
Quorum.
Quorum, yeah.
All right.
Here we have quorum, but, okay, then, no further action. Consider it tonight. Our next meeting will be April, I have my calendar with me.
Twenty-third.
April 23rd? When's April 23rd?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question for Natalie. Any new developments on the shock subdivision since that's coming back?
So, that was directed to come back to P and Z from county commission, but at the time that decision was made, it was too late to get the notice in for this month, so it will come back in April.
But no new developments or any negotiations?
I think they may present a different plat, maybe less, less that lot. Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
Mark Isaacs again. The answer to that question is we're planning on filing an amended plat Monday for the filing deadline, and that will consist of no residential lots. It will be two 35-acre ag lots that they would be proposing. So, they are purchasing 70 acres off of the Clines, and then they would make two 35-acre lots. So, there would be no request for residential zoning.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other further business for last, last call?
Move to adjourn.
Your motion to adjourn? Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're getting kind of, we're out here kind of really nice, that's a good deal. Okay.